So, good evening and welcome everyone to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Work Session for Thursday, October tenth, and at this time I'd like to call the meeting to order. Your motion for a discussion is on the agenda.
Second.
I think I had three motions in a second, at least one second, all those in favor say aye. Any next? The ayes have it, thank you very much council, and tonight we're talking about proposed twenty twenty five, uh, twenty six, buying of budget, city council regulations and recommendations, and later we're gonna move on to uh, the comprehensive plan update, so with that, let's start it off with the budget. All of you have comments or suggestions about the new budget?
I just heard. It's gonna be complex, isn't it?
Oh, oh.
No, let me go get it.
Oh, that's, that's all good, let's uh, with the indulgence of the committee, by the council, excuse me, can we flip it? I don't need a, in there, I don't need a second? Okay, let's move that.
How much time should we reserve for the budget though, because this easily could take up this time and more into the regular session.
Yeah, we can play by ear, and, and let's just do a comp and then we'll, if the budget takes time, we'll, we'll find it someplace else. So, every, everyone with that also mounted. Great, thank you, so moving on to the comprehensive plan update, I believe that we're up in as the floor.
So I, I will just kick us off and say, uh, what you have is, I, I've had trouble finding the final revised schedule, which is revised by availability of, uh, of some of the consultants, um, and, and also to cover the time when, uh, Mark will be out town on our lease. So this is the current schedule, so you won't have to find it buried through all the chain emails, just so you, you have it, so today we'll start with introduction and housing.
Uh, thank you, we're, we're trying to get Christina on board, uh, but we have two staff members from Leland, which is the primary presentation. Uh, and I realize we only have this David Fisk, this is mayor and city council. Uh, and so as we're waiting for Christina, she has the working document that has incorporated comments, including the council comments, so this first fifteen minutes I want to reserve for Leland to give the formal presentation.
Outstanding, thank you, David. Gentlemen, you have the floor, welcome.
Excellent, thank you, um, mayor, council members, uh, no, I've met a couple of you all, but for the rest of you, um, nice to meet you, my name is David Fisk, I'm an associate with Leland Consulting Group, yeah, and so with my colleague Andrew here, been working together with you all and your planning committee for over a year now, uh, so it's, it's nice to be here, and, um, sort of bringing it full circle, bringing all of our hard work to you all to, to review, uh, tonight, so, right? Coming through clearly?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great.
Sorry, I'm here.
Um, well, as, uh, as Mark indicated, we have just a brief fifteen minute presentation for you, sort of hit on the highlights. Um, here's Christina. Um, about the, the housing element, so go through a little bit of the, you know, he did, mostly focusing on, um, a lot of the, the new requirements and updates to the Growth Management Act that uh, requires cities to plan for housing in a different way, this comp plan cycle, uh, and some, some results assessment and, um, and land capacity analysis, but then majority of the time reserved for questions and discussion with you all, and to, to go through the comment provided on the element that Christina is here to share as well, so with that, to you all, I'm gonna share my screen, and we can hop right into it. Alright. Is everybody seeing my screen?
You bet.
Excellent. So, um, brief agenda here, basically what I just explained to you, um, objectives of the elements, uh, some of the GMA and other legislative requirements, brief overview of some of our work, and then get into the goals and policies. So, in terms of the objectives of this housing element, um, you know, it's sort of two-pronged, a lot of the work that we've done, and especially in this periodic update cycle, has to do with regulatory compliance. Mentioned the, the GMA, the Growth Management Act, uh, a lot of new, um, new requirements there that I'll get into in a little more detail in a moment, as well as, uh, regional, right, PSRC, um, Vision Twenty Fifty Metropolitan or multi-county planning policies, and King County countywide planning policies that are all, um, requirements for compliance with other regulations or, or policies that are handed down to, to, to you. Uh, but then, of course, this is your comp plan, you're meant to be your living document over the next twenty years, and so it's very important as well that, that compliance with those, those, uh, requirements also meets your community vision and priorities, and so a lot of, a lot of the work we've done with you also sort of boils down to this, this bolded one at the top here around balancing environmental stewardship with housing affordability and neighborhood, uh, tree canopy, and then sort of the beautiful neighborhoods that you all have in Lake Forest Park. Um, so that's sort of where this, this policy document is really geared towards, as well as meeting these other overarching, uh, goals of the comp plan. Uh, so mention the Growth Management Act and the requirements around housing elements, so just briefly overviewing sort of a lot of these new, new, uh, requirements in this this cycle, so, uh, as many of you might be familiar with, in twenty twenty one, House Bill twelve twenty was passed, which amended the Growth Management Act. That required, basically has these five bullet points of, of new requirements or updates to previous requirements on how to do planning for housing in the state of Washington, and so some new requirements around housing needs assessment, uh, which we, we completed for you all. Uh, updates to your goals, policies and objectives that are reflective of all of those new state mandates. Uh, residential land capacity analysis, which, um, has to be done, uh, differently now, as it has to account for housing needs or land capacity, I should say, to meet housing needs by income, different income groups, which we'll get into again in, in a moment. Um, provisions for all economic segments, so that's looking at, um, identifying any barriers that exist to the provision or the actual production of housing within your community to meet your needs, and identifying potential action steps or provisions, um, to meet the needs of all economic segments. And then a, a new very big requirement was around assessing racially disparate impacts, uh, exclusion and displacement risk with um, your housing, uh, frameworks within your city and, and your housing market. Uh, that's all coming from the state, which trickles down to the regional and policies, and that, again, sort of focuses on this future housing unit targets or, or these needs, these mandates being um, turned into targets by income bands, which I'll share in a moment, uh, also middle housing and accessory dwelling units. Uh, policies to address racially disparate impacts, so you'll see a lot of the changes to, to policy had to do with addressing these new needs, uh, as well as language adjustments to reflect some of the, the needed changes around different housing typologies, the location of housing, et cetera. So sort of an overview of what's coming from, from above. Uh, in addition to House Bill twelve twenty, there is also thirteen thirty seven, which has to do with accessory dwelling units. So this is getting a little bit further along into actual implementation or code changes, but just sort of important to, to give the, the full context of what we're doing this update within, um, and making sure the policies are reflective and supportive of these, these upcoming changes, and so um, thirteen thirty seven requires all cities to change their codes if they're not in compliance, uh, with new, uh, new mandates around uh, accessory dwelling units, and so, and, and allowing for accessory dwelling units in new ways within your city, and so in, in initial review of Lake Forest Park's current regulation shows that there will be some changes that need to be made by June of next year related to owner occupancy, um, allowing of two ADUs on all lots. Uh, things related to floor ratio, uh, garage conversions, not requiring additional parking, and there, there are some additional pieces that come along with that legislation as well, so just want to point, point out that's sort of coming down the pipe. Um, but because, um, Lake Forest Park also has a lot of critical areas, flood plans, geologically hazardous areas, those areas can be um, exempt or, or restricted in some cases, uh, related to this new ADU, um, legislation and requirements. And, and lastly, last staple we'll touch on today is, is eleven ten, which has to do with middle housing, which is a big change for all cities, including Lake Forest Park, and how they, um, how they regulate housing, so adopted in twenty twenty three, this is requiring all cities, including you all, to, uh, update your housing element and development regulations to allow for middle housing in all residential zones, uh, again, by June of next year. And, uh, if, if the, those code updates are not made, but the state actually has the power to impose a model code that's been, been developed in the stead of those locally adopted options, so that's a big part of this process, as well as making sure your policies are in place, and then eventually your code to, um, to meet those new requirements. And then this, this House Bill twenty three twenty one was a trailer on from that, but basically said, remove some confusion there about, um, critical areas being exempt from these requirements around middle housing. They removed that exemption clause, or made it clear that those areas were not exempt, and so just sort of pointing that out as well, that's a, another piece of the puzzle here as relates to middle house. Probably saw that a lot of the policy changes have to do with diversity of housing, housing choice, a lot of that has to do with middle housing. So that's sort of the overview of the, bit of the regulatory and policy framework that we're working within, um. High level overview of the key findings from the Housing Needs Assessment, uh, that we updated from your previous comp plan. Uh, so, real quickly, just bullets, the, the full Housing Needs Assessment and background, uh, it's are, are included as part of the element, uh, for, for your review, um, but the, like, have a, uh, an aging population, or that the average age is, is getting um, which, you know, may be signaling that there is a need for smaller, more units. Uh, another thing that was noted is there are real challenges for renter households, the forest park, uh, particularly renter households are, um, more, on average, more low income, they face higher rates of housing cost burden, which means their and of their, the overall household income towards housing, uh, they're more racially first, and generally have smaller households as well, and so this calls for a need or for more affordable units for one, as well as a greater quantity or variety of rental unit within Lake, is Lake Forest Park, which could range anywhere from apartments to, to accessory dwelling to meet the needs of renter households. Um, another finding around challenges for workers, those that are employed within Lake Forest Park, uh, main job park are not high, high wage earning jobs, um. Analysis showed that there, uh, these wages are not, not sufficient for most able to afford to live comfortably within the city, and so again, calling for, I pretend for, for additional housing, choice, housing affordability that would, that would help more employ.
You froze up there, my friend.
Region, which is, uh, which is a regional goal and, and policy.
Hey David, you're freezing up, maybe turn off your camera, give you a little more bandwidth.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, my.
Yes, yes. There you go.
See if that helps then, apologies.
No worries.
Uh, can I ask, yeah, I, a question occurred to me, um, so, one of the things that's been brought to my attention in the last years, that we have quite a few Airbnbs in Lake Forest Park, and that has a tendency to take rental housing off the market, and a number of cities around the country I know are regulating them, we don't regulate them at all. Is that anything you looked at on challenges for renter households, did you look at the presence of Airbnbs at all?
Um, you know, it's been a major part of our, our analysis, no, um, we'll say that there, yeah, there are a number of, of cities, right, regionally or nationally that have implemented stricter permitting, uh, requirements around, around short term um, that, that seem to help in that regard, um, but it's not something we looked at in terms of, of how that may be impacting.
Okay, thank you, I just, I just was curious, I wasn't pressed for it, I was just curious if that was anything you liked.
Thank you, David, please continue.
Yes, and hopefully I'm coming through a little clearer now.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, these last four bullets, just another thing that was noted is the lack of housing size options, I think there was one or two questions actually in your comments related to this. Um, so this is, is talking about, you know, as this chart on the right here, there, the vast majority of housing in Lake Forest Park is in single-family homes. Those are, are larger, not in the sense necessarily large by square footage, but large by number of bedrooms. And, and when we look at that compared to size of households on average within or of different household sizes within the city, um, there is a, there is a bit of a mismatch. And of course, people that, of smaller households may choose to live in a larger home. But there's a lack of, again, of options, uh, for maybe one or two bedroom, or, or studio apartments, or those types of housing, um, just means there are a few options for, for smaller households that, that may wish to downsize, or, of course, smaller units tend to be more affordable, so, um, just that sort of lack of diversity again within, within the housing stock of the city. Um, you know, a lot of talk about new types of housing that may be, be needed, a real, uh, constraint on that is limited land availability. So, um, you know, Lake Forest Park is nearly exclusively for single-family development, though again, that'll be changing with these new middle housing, um, requirements. Um, but not just that much of it is built out, and so there's, there's not room for, for real expansion of new subdivisions. Um, and there are significant environmental constraints throughout the city, right, and so this limit, limited land availability means there's not much land for denser housing development, especially multifamily style development. Um, but rezoning some areas or allowing for, again, um, wider diversity, especially of middle housing that can be compatible with some of the form and, and scale of your existing neighborhoods, um, is, is a major, um, policy goal that you'll see stated within the element, uh, to help address this. Um, last couple here, homeownership and how, housing prices, probably no surprise to all of you. Um, housing prices throughout the region have just been going crazy and increasing over the last number of years, no different in Lake Forest Park. And as of, as of now, you know, per, per our assessment, um, you know, the majority of houses sold in Lake Forest Parker in the past year would not be affordable to most current residents of the city if they were trying to buy a home today. Um, so again, just speaking to that need for, for more units, particularly potentially townhomes or condominiums, other types of ownership products that can potentially be more affordable to a wider range of households. Um, and then lastly here, the spatial equity consideration, this is, this is coming from the racially disparate impacts assessment, RDI assessment that we performed. Um, and just pointing out that, you know, in general, uh, you're, you know, black indigenous, people of color, um, you're, those households tend to be lower in income, uh, tend to be renters more often, um, than, than other, other, uh, race and ethnicities, and, um, tend to live more in multifamily housing, which is, is concentrated just in a couple of pockets within Lake Forest Park. Uh, so again, speaking to some of the potential need to create more opportunities, uh, throughout the city for, for residents to live, uh, whether that's through, you know, ADUs, duplexes, other forms of, of rental housing, or affordable homeownership options, uh, that can help alleviate some of these spatial equity concerns, and, um, that again is, is a major theme that you, you'll see reflected in the, in the new policies. Um, so, just to, last couple slides here is really about, um, getting a bit more into and, so we talked about housing needs, um, the housing needs by the numbers, by, on the growth targets that are allocated from, from the county growth targets, and then allocated down to housing units by the county to the city, so these are the numbers that we've had to plan through this process, um. In aggregate, it's eight hundred and seventy minutes over the next twenty years, um, but then they're broken down, and this is new in this planning cycle by, by these different income brackets represented as percentages of area. So, what you'll notice here, the, the blue bars represent the new gray being what exists today is that most of the need is there within the lower income, um, zero to eighty percent area median income. Um, some in that moderate income bracket of eighty to one twenty percent, and then a, a small where, um, uh, for, for households making over a hundred and twenty percent AMI, and on the right here is how roughly the, the types of housing, the tip households making these, these incomes, and so when we're planning for, for these housing needs, looking at your land capacity, we're looking at capacity for these different types of housing. And so when we broke that down and did, did the land capacity analysis, uh, the good news is that, that the city does have adequate capacity to meet those, it's, this sort of aggregates those needs into those three different areas, low, moderate, and, and high income households. Um, I swear we did not, but, but when we ran the math, uh, the capacity for zero to eighty came out of your, your needed, uh, or above your targets. Um, but across all categories, there's adequate capacity within your adequate zone capacity for housing, which is good news. Um, the, the other thing that just to add on here, you probably noticed in that, that graph previously, there's a separate green bar, let's go back real quickly, that is emergency housing, this is, is a separate, um, type of housing, right, that is not included in your overall capacity analysis, so there is a separate, um, need to, to plan for emergency housing needs within each community. And so, what this require to look into your current code to see if emergency housing is allowed, it turns out it's not explicitly allowed, emergency housing, emergency shelters, or permanent supportive housing is not explicitly supported within your code, so that's yet under this new legislation, another thing that, that will need to be updated, um, but then we perform an analysis within the zones where hotels are currently allowed, and this is most typically where shelters are, um, are permitted, or a form of emergency shelter that is, that is often, you know, older hotels or hotels will be converted into a shelter in an emergency situation. We looked at those zones, and if provisions were made to, to allow for emergency housing, there would be adequate capacity, um. So that's, that's also a part of the, the background documentation in the element. Then the last slide I've got here of numbers is, so the last piece and, and new requirement in this, this cycle is looking at, is called adequate provisions, um, and looking at, at production trends across these different housing types uh, to look at your historic annual production of, of housing versus your future annual need. And then if there are deficits in either any of these categories, looking at potential barriers that exist within your your regulations, your, your permitting process, et cetera, um, and identifying actions to, to remove potential barriers to production. Um, so that's another, another piece, there's some checklists that were performed to identify some of those actions, um. As you can see here, for the deficit largely being in that zero to eighty percent, uh, AMI category, um, so this is sort of the last piece of the puzzle, there's, there's the policy component, which is, which is what we'll be talking about in just a moment, but then of course, coming after that is, is how do you implement some of these things, and this already identifying some of those potential actions to be taken in the years to come. So with that, um, this slide is just sort of set up the discussion around policy, uh, I know Christina also has your comments ready to, to pull up and look at as well. Um, these three categories are really the major, where the major changes happen to your, your current comp plan around supply and diversity, uh, form and scale in your residential neighborhoods, and, and how to address affordability. Um, but with that, I will, I will stop speaking and, um, open it up to any questions you all have, and, uh, yeah. Hope that all came through clearly.
Yeah, definitely, we're voting.
I would just like to add some additional kind of cap, uh, footnotes to the presentation, so we do have current regulations that require multifamily housing, um, of five units or more, I believe, to make sure that X percent, I think it would be one unit, um, provides affordable housing, I believe the standard is fifty to eighty percent AMI for the requirement. Um, so that's one thing we have in place, we do have our ADU, uh, rules, which, um, will require revision, but take us partway in the direction we need to go, we also have a tax incentive provision to go lower than, uh, fifty percent AMI, uh, and, uh, so far, uh, no one has taken advantage of those. Um, I do think we have multi-unit capacity, I think the challenge we face on lack of development of that is that those properties are currently occupied. Uh, and to some extent, they may be occupied with pre-existing ownership or, uh, rental conditions that are advantageous. Uh, so we see that, uh, uh, at least from what I hear about Town Center right now, uh, the plan, uh, for the owner is to optimize commercial uh, at the site, so, uh, don't know about Southern Gateway, uh, multi-unit properties, but just a little context, I think that this is good news for us that we have capacity, just wanted to provide it, it, we have, we have thought about these issues in past, uh, council meetings, um, so just wanted to flag that.
Thank you, Debbie, all these questions for David on presentation. Mr. Ligo.
Thank you very much, um, like to understand, and this may seem rather basic, is that as a city, we need to provide for the opportunities. Uh, are there any requirements that we have to then, uh, provide housing as an example, so if we provide the opportunities within our code and regulation, um, if those goals are still not met, does the city have to take a different step?
I, I said the only step on the horizon is a five-year check-in report card, and this is aspirational, it's policy, we do not build. We have to plan for and accommodate through zoning policy and so forth, and that's it. If it doesn't get achieved, there's no, ever.
As a follow-up, is there anybody who would say, well, you don't either have enough incentives, or the way that you met it doesn't incentivize, or in some ways actually decentivize? Meaning is someone gonna look into, look over the code and say, you really haven't, you've addressed it technically, but not in spirit? And the reason that you're not, uh, getting the additional desired housing goal is because of subtleties within your code?
I, I, I could foresee comments coming to a variety of cities saying exactly that. For us, with the capacity and what we're facing as a tier-three city, it could be advisory in comparison, but the two opportunities are the King County Affordable Housing Committee, uh, conformance with the, the CPPs and the growth targets and policies, a comment could come forth from that process. Department of Commerce also certifies the entire comprehensive plan and may have some housing comment. I, I would offer at this point, the draft is consistent with the CPPs for this round. More legislation may come, similar to other states, I would also offer that it's consistent with the legislation that's in place, including twelve twenty, which changes the Growth Management Act, requiring us to plan for and accommodate all. But not more. It doesn't go further as far as mandates.
Thank you. All the questions for David? Yes, that's really good.
Absolutely, questions?
Please.
This seems like it's a building goal and not necessarily uh, based on trying to house people, there's other ways that you can accomplish housing people in an affordable manners such as home share, I brought it up several times, but, uh, there's, I, I don't see anything, there's no discussion about home share in a plan like this, where I think it could accomplish a lot of the goals, especially for lower income people, older people, younger people, even families, uh, to use that that, uh, method of housing people. So my question is, is it, can the use of home share count toward the goals for housing?
David, could you hear the question?
Yeah, um, that's a, that's a good question, and, uh, I think in terms of, you know, how we actually account for zone capacity for housing, it would be a difficult thing to, to account for, um. Or I should say, it's not something that we've attempted to account for before in, in any of our land capacity analyses, a, a home share program. Um, it is certainly something that could be reflected in, in policy language, could be reflected in, um, you know, through supportive actions at the city level, um, but in terms of of, of looking at, at zone capacity for housing, it really is an exercise of looking for capacity for new housing units, uh, which, which is the, you know, sort of the, the planning direction and mandate that's, that's handed down by the state, um. So in that way, I don't know that it would be reflected uh within within that process.
Thank you both. This is a riddle.
Thank you. Um, looking at. One of the slides that that was in the background information on housing was showing that. The majority of folks who work in Lake Forest Park are way below being able to afford anything here. But they're not necessarily low income. They're just workforce income. Um. And I've noticed that we that gets kind of glombed together in a lot of these areas. It's, you know, zero to eighty percent. But there really is a distinct difference from a planning perspective, in my opinion, for the, you know, the. Fifty to eighty percent versus the low income that may need supportive needs, whereas the other ones just need affordable housing. Um, have you, is there a way to tease that out? Have you found? Whether separating those is useful in these policy discussions?
It's it's a great question. Um, and you know, I think in 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 a way. If you look at at your targets here, you know, it is breaking it out by. By smaller brackets of income. And so I think a lot of those more, you know, the workforce housing that you're speaking to is more of that that. Fifty to eighty, eighty to one hundred percent area median income, those folks that are. You know, making a decent living, but but not enough to necessarily afford. Certainly to to buy a home, but in in many cases also to rent or even or to find a rental. Uh, home within within a community. Um, so it is broken out in in essence, in terms of of identified need. And I think that that piece of analysis in the in the background document is is meant to sort of to point that out in that, you know, there are. Quite a few people that that work here that can't afford to to live here. They might not require, you know, income restricted or subsidized affordable housing. But they, there is still a need if they if they want to live within Lake Forest Park um for. More naturally occurring affordable housing.
Please.
I, because I noticed in uh the goal H three housing affordability, a lot of the policies are directed towards that lowest income bracket and about providing. Uh, opportunities for subsidies, nonprofit support. So I I just didn't see as many policies that would be targeting that workforce level.
I think in terms of H three, which is the one that focuses on affordability, I think it it is meant to be um. At least somewhat focused on, you know, subsidized, income-restricted, affordable housing. But I think a lot of the other policy language, um, and again, this this is consistent with with sort of the state and regional. Uh, goals as well around diversity of housing options. And middle housing in particular is the the type of housing that can most typically be more affordable to those those households. Um, and so. That's that's where it is addressed within the the policy framework um as of now.
We can, when we go through, we can look at clarifying that.
Oh, and if you don't mind, I'd like to do a check here. We have a second to do item. Would you like to move that to the regular business meeting under? Uh, council discussion and or action. About discussion budget.
Could I suggest we do budget? Because I do think the discussion of housing and the introduction is going to take a chunk of time tonight, which is better moved to the. To the regular meeting. So I suggest. We do budget now. It might not be that long and then move on to the introduction.
That's your first time. Um, how long do we have our friends from Leland?
I was gonna check in here.
Okay, so my recommendation would be, we have anybody that has questions specifically for Leland. Ask them now, even if they don't get answers, just so they know.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, but I just add, uh, the place where we have zoning. That allows hotel-type lodgings and emergency shelter is the what's currently the North Park. Uh, metal site. On Bounder.
That's right.
So just wanted people to know that we do have. Site, that's our only site that allows lodgings like that, not as opposed to Airbnb type.
Oh, except a question for our friends Andrew, um, David or Christina. One, that's your first question, please. Many of us submitted comments about housing element. Um, to uh that you there. Um, and to the uh Community Development Director. Did they get forwarded on to?
They did, yeah.
Okay.
And Christina will be here all, um, if if you go into regular session, she and I will be there.
Right, so there's no, there's no reason to repeat any of those comments that we just say.
Not with Leland, yeah.
We'll, we'll be going through page by page uh with Christina. She's kind of organized it all on the document or in collaboration with the doctor. Thank you, Christina.
All these other questions. For David. Okay, thank you, David, for an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
That was great. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night. Then Christina, you and I will be in regular session at some point later tonight.
I I thought we, depending on how long budget takes. We could start with introduction or should we just hold that till?
Oh, no, we're here till seven, yeah. I just didn't want her to sign off.
Do you want to postpone budget?
It's it's a little bit, I'll, I'll really like to see folks.
How long do people think it would?
You've got about.
I guess. Let's do it and get that.
Let's let's bounce through and then we'll um go back. That's a discussion during the regular business. Welcome to Dr. Hunt. Thank you for your flexibility. Uh, devoting to the biennial budget colleagues, um. We're consuming our discussion here and um. Staff are available to answer any questions or listen to comments that you might have.
Those guys, Elliot, I did email out today our um. Now I'm losing. So there's spreadsheet, we can mail to you. This, the entity, the dollar amount, which budget pays for it. If you know, it also provides you a link to their website, so you can do. Little research on them, so that's in your.
I'm sorry, this will be about.
Thank you. I asked that when emails are sent out the day of the meeting, the printed copies come because not everyone may be able to access their email.
Sure.
Prior to the meeting, so if that would be uh amenable, it would be issued.
You bet. Yeah, thank you for that, John. That's a good point. Um, all except there, uh, let's go.
Thanks. Uh, so for those who haven't seen the email, would it be fair to summarize that every membership is either? Optional and under five thousand dollars or required?
There are two that are required.
But what I mean is that if everything is either required or cheap.
No, because some are not required and they're not cheap. So A W C is not required.
Oh. I read your email saying that every city in the state has to be.
So every every city in town in the state is.
Is.
It's not required.
Mr. Lee.
May the uh administration bring copies of the emails to the. For this evening's discussion.
Yeah, if you want to discuss, I suppose, I can go print some copies. I thought that this was informational for you to review on your own time for future budget meetings. I I wasn't. I think we discussed it tonight. I just want to let you know that it's been sent out for you to review.
Goodness, uh, sounds really good. Because basically I sent my response through email, literally half an hour before this meeting. Um, you know, you probably haven't seen this. But I noticed that Riot Eight and uh going K four C are not included. This is not a different kind of membership.
That was just the memberships were identified in budget that we talked about at the last meeting in the table that we went to. So those are the ones that I answered.
The general fund. So we uh we had a discussion for the ex- under the executive departments for city memberships. And those are under the general fund. Um, I'd have to go back and look to see if those two are funded. From someplace not within the. What we would define as department one fifty, which is showing up on this. So I would have to do some research and circle back to on where they are.
But I mean, given in in light of basically the fact that they are in council where Goldman's uh terminal to cheap. Um, it might, yeah, it's, I don't think it's particularly necessary. I just was wondering if if they, if we had dropped it in there, but we have.
These are specific to Jenny, which was like talking about where we say. Those are here, memberships.
Um, I read the email and as someone who brought this up, um, I am, I. I didn't really see opportunity to drop anything. So even as a symbolic effort, so I um apologize for the. For the review uh process, uh, but it's helpful for the future. Cause now we'll all, we'll all remember it, so.
Absolutely. It is a good exercise and it is really good for all of us to refresh our reviews about the list of things that we have in there because they can. Grow and then, you know, it it's important for us to review this. In our figure share responsibilities. Yeah, Paul, do you want to move on from memberships to other questions? House number.
Uh, sure, and I appreciate the city administrator sending out the word about devices. And I think uh um that language is pretty good. I don't, I didn't say anything that really need change. And they sent it up to the whole group. I said, you sent that to the leadership because you started that document.
All right. They they will be shared some.
Yes. And expanded upon as.
They kind of have warehouse clauses, so um I I think, do you, when will you want feedback on that?
Well, I'll send, I'll send it out to the entire, I think I had next week's budget finance meeting.
Oh, right, that's. Okay.
To discuss that and then. Apparently, there's three items on there, things that were not included in the mayor's budget. Council has talked about the climate manager, some of the heating positions and the cooling positions are in there. But then if there's anything else that would come out during deliberations, if you pull back to the mayor's budget recommended, those would be potentially added to the provisos. With your correction, what the triggers are for those to be brought back into the budget that may buy or something.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I've been straight and clear. I think that the idea of having provisos in this manner really is effective because we have a lot of various.
I I also just want to acknowledge that quite a bit has been asked from me specifically, the finance department, which AKA is me. Um, at this point, and I just haven't, this has been a very busy week and I have not been able to get to the requests. Um, and able to turn around to provide them to council. They've not been forgotten about. They're not being ignored. Um. I I just want to acknowledge that piece of of this conversation and know that. Um, next Thursday, we will probably be having a um. A broader conversation around what's been requested.
She has been a very, very, very busy week. Debbie Merbody.
Uh, I'll just chime in and say, uh, a bit of context. I was in the Sound Cities Deputy Mayor's call. Today and there was representation from about ten cities, uh, and uh all are facing budget crunches. Um, Issaquah in particular is looking, but they have a staff of two hundred. But they are looking at laying off fifteen to twenty people uh in light of their budget crisis, uh, and um. Uh, Des Moines is looking at uh doing a public safety levy lid lift. Uh, as with previous ones from the city of Kirkland and um. And uh Maple Valley, they passed their public safety levies within the last few years. They all have been permanent. So I wanted to share that revenue kind of issue. Um, last but not least, there was some question about why does the state get to keep all of the twenty-five percent cannabis tax? Even if you'd have cannabis stores in your city and you're providing police protection for them. So that was an interesting one. So just on the revenue side of future. Opportunities that could go into other provisos, uh. I thought those were all interesting.
And on point colleagues, I mentioned the other night that one city was considering serious layoffs now that the topic is approached. Has been approached. Um, it's not next by any, it's immediate. Their their circumstances are serious. They need to do it very soon, which is a real challenge and thankfully we're not. In those kinds of circumstances. All these other questions.
We've had some sort of tangential discussions as a as a council around. What a larger traffic safety program could look like in Lake Forest Park, starting around our schools and then looking at other areas where we see a lot of. Uh, traffic and illegal activity. I know that there's an opportunity perhaps for a bus only lane. Uh, camera to prevent, you know, folks from using that and and. I don't know if that's something that we want to sort of create. A decision like we would like to look into this and like actually create a a pocket of money to go research a holistic sort of. Safety system around our roads and what that might cost.
It's true. So if you remember when council pulled back the plus one out of the police department, part of the funding went towards. Part of the revenue went towards funding a study and the study was to focus on the elements that came out of the um. Council retreat back in March. If you remember, they were looking at SR five twenty-two and one of four for speed and for cameras, red light cameras, thirty-fifth and one of four. Crosswalks and the additional schools on camera. I have that coming to you a bunch of the finances next week for the contract for that. When we build forward was in that bell route. Um, so those will be the first things that we study and then based on what that comes out of that's that's a. Will identify how many cameras that there would be potentially. Um, that then we would have an equity study. Focuses on that. That's the way I, as I've talked to you, requested that the last ego, last equity study. Um, is on a per-location basis, and so they want to understand that.
Okay.
And that's just step one. Then we need to identify, and that would cover speed cameras on five twenty-two. As well as speed one, because that's not really what I asked them to get our own data, keep relying on the state, and so that's this body of work. There obviously will be future things that council is going to want to do. We will be to identify how that gets paid for. And these be prepared. For us that it's traffic safety, so we could definitely identify that. Maybe it's a mid buy that says revenue circular.
Yeah, thank you, Minister.
So it sounds like we don't really need to invest any more capital into that process. What we have already started. Should be sufficient to give us what we can make our decisions. Okay.
In fact, the contract for um transport, which I'll be bringing forward, is almost right on the dollar. I didn't even tell them. So there was a touch over the professional services and the executive part of that. And then the additional work that they've done by the west, won't be at that level, so I think we'll be.
They would say, according to, we've asked for an increase to the traffic home program, so some of the needs flowing through things that have been backed up. Prepare to find some uh speed cushion belows, you know, you know, things like that, traffic calming measures. That is in the budget, and I do believe it may be the mid buy, but it may be a budget adjustment when it comes to when we figure out what these revenues are actually.
And I guess the the other piece where I was going is if council decides to move forward with additional cameras, that additional revenue. Given the the how much time it takes us for go through this, would we see that revenue in twenty-five or twenty-six? Just kind of understanding how much time these processes take.
I would bet it's twenty-six. I, I, one thing I'm going to recommend as we move forward is additional traffic cameras as we go out there in our queue. For those services, we use the same vendor forever. Um, I think there's some. It would be worth the effort to see wells is out there, what their prices look like, with the technology. It's like. I think there's a lot of vendors that entered that market since six or traffic.
And I would also.
I'm sorry, there's a lot of the, even if you use the current vendor, there's a lot of the time on that. Installations. I prefer to double up on potentially. There might be some opportunities. How their technology works. How their technology works and being supported.
Okay, cause with that does come the extra staffing that would be around to support the tickets. And so there's kind of a whole rolling process with that. I would like to uh, suggest to the council that maybe we do a bit, a, a more thorough conversation with the community about, around the purpose of these and what we're, why we're doing it, and who's being protected, and who's being served by this, and how the money is getting used, does any, the, the community, I think, is uh, yearning for a little more information around this process uh, next time we do the process.
Yeah, thank you for this.
Their transportation project manager, which is uninvited, which would be that type of number, which is a stat position.
And basically, I've got, they're down to twenty-four point zero eight miles in our coverage now, which is a stellar result regardless of revenues. Alex, we have a couple more minutes and then we move upstairs, council people.
Uh, yeah, turning to the climate managers, I was wondering, have we heard back from Republic about the timetable where the, they could implement uh, solid waste?
Don't steal, Mr. Gil's anger.
I can just say, discussion with her, they're amenable to getting us the gross sales numbers by Monday. So that then I can run some numbers for council to consider what percentage of money to charge, what dollars that would generate. Um, and then she just needs to check on if they need to do anything, they'll notice, so that when they raise their rates, they have to give ninety days' notice. So obviously, that with her, we can see, if, if this triggers that same threshold, um, if it doesn't, be, you know, early first quarter, it would be remitted to us directly from Republic on the basis. They've done this all over, they're actually quite excited about it, she has a lot of information, so my way. Um, they partner with a lot of cities, Mamish and Kimmore and everything, and so coalition of climate managers, their monthly, regional meetings, there's, there's quite an effort out there. Um, she's even willing to kind of speak to council on a lot of this and kind of the things they do and. By submission, so it's looking good.
Thank you. Excellent, thanks, thank you, thank you for your help. Alex, we're at uh, six fifty-two, I think we should, during this meeting, we can move upstairs. We will add to council a discussion or action, um, discussion of the recent plan.
Council members, if you could be mindful that we're trying to get through all of the introduction and almost all, if not all, housing tonight. Cause otherwise, we will have an even bigger backlog.
Let's go to that, that's under the council item ten, right, other than their sections.
Uh, it would be, let's see, where are we?
We will.
Yeah, item ten, it'd be discussion.
Correct.
That, if somebody, if somebody kindly make a motion to.
Yes.
Continue discussion on the plan.
You bet, so we have two amendments to the agenda. Good place, folks, thank you, the orders to have your.